I'm introducing to you Gabriella Anne Heron Stedman. She's from Forest Hill Community Learning Center. She is a first grader at Forest Hill Community Learning Center and she is the daughter of Wilfred and Tanisha Stedman. Gabriella's favorite subject is arts and her favorite color is red. Her hobbies are painting, gardening, computer games, board puzzles, and riding her scooter. Some of her accomplishments are: she had perfect attendance in kindergarten and in first grade, and she was Citizen of the Month for respect. When Gabriella grows up, she wants to become a teacher. If you come across a LeBron James Family Foundation video with a cute little girl in a summer sundress smiling and reading books, you just may see Gabriella. Her older brother Wiley is in the Wheels for Education program and their family's yard was one of the many chosen to be spruced up by the foundation. Welcome Gabriella.
Welcome to the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I asked her, she was scared. She said, "Oh." Yeah, that's... Can you introduce the people that came with you today? Any others here? Someone in your family? Can you tell us?
Hi.
Okay, where's your mom? Right there. Okay. Anybody else? No? Anybody else? Anybody else in your family? Nobody else? Okay. All her school family is here. Is it some of your school family, Tom?
Yeah.
Anybody else? No. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves? She came.
Craig Blonheim, the principal of Forest Hill Community Learning Center.
Angela Dinkins, first grade teacher. Teacher at a public school, Forest Hill.
She said she's good teaching. All right, thanks for coming. Now, I know that we are very exciting, but I also know there are turkeys to be prepared and pies to be baked and homework to be done. So if you all want to stay for a little while, you're welcome, but you can go and go about doing that busy business if you need to. So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for bringing me. You don't usually get that much cute, oh, in my meeting. All right. Now's the time for our community and school reflections. What do you have to share today? Reverend Walker.
I had the privilege this past week of traveling with some outstanding educators at the public schools as we went to the National Alliance of Black School Educators along with superintendent David James. It was their 43rd annual NAPSC meeting which was held in Washington DC. Mrs. Kelly and her crew of humorous, entertaining teachers kept us going as we shared in a variety of workshops. The conference is divided in several areas. There's superintendent workshops, there's a superintendent commission, there's an area that deals with board members, an area for parents, an area for higher ed educators, an area for other persons who deal with education. But we began with a plenary session, and that plenary session was a panel discussion educating our children in the age of Black Lives Matter. And it was a very exciting plenary session. We had representatives from Howard University, from different other areas of the community who shared how our children have to move through this era, this difficult time of Black Lives Matter, and looking at how they perceive all those things and how we perceive it as educators, how we educate our children during those times. Governance and education dealt basically with school board members. So to help us to be trained and educated about numerous things that are going to come down the pipe. Again, there were luncheons that were excellent speakers. One of the speakers was the district prosecutor for the state of Maryland, Marilyn Mosley, who spoke, who, of course, we've seen her in the news. She's a young woman who must tackle that difficult situation where the young man was believed to be killed by several police officers who are now wanted to be set to go to trial. And she was an excellent, excellent speaker, a very challenging individual. So again, I want to thank the superintendent for inviting me on the trip and Sister Kelly and her crew of educators for keeping it not only lively but very educational.
I neglected to mention that Ms. Debbie Walsh is sitting at the end of the table. She was elected in November and it's a policy of the board, a practice of the board actually, not really a policy, to invite elected board members to join us. They ask questions, they just don't have votes, which is why she wasn't called for roll call. So I didn't want you guys to think that I was ignoring her at the end of the table. Does anyone else have anything to share?
I had the opportunity to attend a really nice luncheon on Saturday, the links of the Power Cross Sheridan. Just nice to be around just wonderfully talented women professionals who were working to advance support with healthcare opportunities for underserved communities, from mammograms to other kind of women's health resources in our community. And later on today, I had an opportunity to be a judge for sweet potato pie. Don't be jealous. Contest for Mount Haven Missionary Doctors Church over at Helen Arnold CLC. It was good on two levels. It was good because the pie was good and the contest was fun, but it's also good to see our communities using these facilities in the way that we intended them to be used as a community resource. And so I was glad to be a part of that.
Isn't the superintendent supposed to make something for you coming up here?
Yeah.
That sounds familiar.
I think it's a peach cobble or something.
Might have to discuss that in the evening session. Anyone else? All right, we have some recognitions tonight.
Yeah, the person I'll ask Mary Kelly to come up and help us recognize, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority.
Now, this is a Delta introducing the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority.
That's right. That's right. Once and for all, all but love. And this evening, it truly is an honor to recognize our Sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. They donated over 5,000 supplies to the students at Forest Hill Community Learning Center. 120 of those supplies included backpacks. And so I do want to take just a moment to give a little bit of background to how this initiative took place because it falls under their education initiative. And they're going to give you just a little bit additional information regarding their cluster meeting and how this came about. So I would like to ask Angela Dinkins, who was already introduced. She is currently a first grade teacher with Akron Public Schools at Forest Hill. So if Dinkins could come forward. I would like you to do two things, so give some background, but before you sit down, I would like for you to also introduce your members who are also present.
Here tonight, we have, beginning on my right, we have Belinda Hinton. She's our public relations chairman. We have Joyce Rowland. She is the co-chairman for the cluster meeting that we have, and great co-chairman was she. We have Michelle Jackson. She's our Say That They Don't Make a Chapter Secretary. We have, next, we have Dana Laguard. On the regional level, she's our resolution chairman. And we have some people who's hiding behind the front row. The graduate chapter supports and mentors the undergraduate chapter members at the University of Akron. So with us tonight, we have Megan McCants, who's the president of Delta Pi Chapter on the campus of the University of Akron. And we have Chantella Dent, who was the undergraduate chairman for the cluster meeting. And I think that's all who's with us tonight. But the Educational Advancement Initiative, basically for the fiscal year up to 2018, want to support children who are in need of school supplies. The major thing, we want to fill backpacks, and you'll see us with several backpacks. But we want to provide the students with basic needs that go into backpacks because I'm disheartened for a kid who may or may not come to school, who may come to school with a backpack but with nothing in it. I've had that this year. Or a student who comes totally without a backpack or any supplies. So through our sorority, one of our initiatives is to support those students who are in need. And each cluster meeting, regional conference, leadership conference, we are asked to donate school supplies. And just so happened this year, Delta Pi Chapter and Say That They Don't Make a Chapter, we were the host and I was the chairman. And like Ms. Outley said, we collected over 5,000 school supplies and 120 which were backpacks. And so far, we've given, basically, all of those out to students who are in need at Forest Hill CLC. Now, we do have some that we have on standby for after the holidays, for those who may be broken or the new students that come in. But this is one thing that will continue throughout 2018, and we were just glad to be able to assist anyway. Forest Hill CLC was one of the schools we never tapped into. So it was just a pleasure working with Mr. Blonheim, who was very supportive and assisted me in any way that he could as far as putting boxes together, getting boxes, tapes, transportation, getting all of the supplies from the hotel. And I would like to thank him, Mr. James, and Ms. Outley, who came out to witness all of the supplies as they were being packed at the hotel. So I just thank you for allowing us to present this gift and allow us to be here tonight.
So Mr. Blonheim is going to join me at this time, and he's just going to share just a few words, few words, few words.
I have to get home and bake, so...
Something for Ms. Sims, please.
The impact.
Yeah, and I just want to share that, you know, several of our students come without the necessary supplies, and this was a great honor for us to have Ms. Dinkins and the lovely ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha help us out. As I shared with them, this is what awesome looks like, when one group comes together to support another in need. And I can't thank you enough for the need or the impact that's made on our kids, and we hope to continue a wonderful relationship with this group.
So this evening, a resolution will be going to board to accept this donation. And at this time, I would like to invite the members to come up for a photo opportunity and to accept this award from our superintendent and the board.
The certificate is awarded to Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated in recognition of its generous donation of 5,234 school supply items to the students at Forest Hill Community Learning Center." Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking forward to knowing what Mr. Blonheim's going to say.
Next, I'll ask Mrs. Butler to come up and introduce our guest from the National Inventors Hall of Fame School Center for STEM Learning.
Good evening, everyone. I am excited to be able to bring Julie Hogarth, our visual arts learning coach at the National Inventors Hall of Fame School Center for STEM Learning, the middle school. And she has someone with her. Grace, would you also come up, you and Julie? Grace, was that your dad?
Yeah.
Dad, where are you going? All right, and instructional leader Morgan is here, and she is trying to get a photo op, and then she's off to a concert at the middle school. So I won't be long-winded. I'll read the certificate of recognition, and then I'd like to have just a few words from both of you. Okay, so, Julie Hogarth, visual arts teacher, National Inventors Hall of Fame School Center for STEM Learning. Congratulations to you for being recognized by the Ovation Foundation, the President's Committee on the Arts and the Humanities, and Americans for the Arts, for integrating art and creativity into STEM curriculum and raising awareness of its importance, and for receiving the Innovation STEAM Grant Award in the amount of $10,000 for academic programming. Julie, if you could just tell us a little bit about how this came to be, what you did with all that cash? And then we'd love to hear maybe just your favorite moment, Grace, while you were in Washington DC to accept the award.
DC was really beautiful and a lot of fun. The ovation, you know how you just get emails about grants all the time? So that one caught my eye because it's STEAM-focused. And people often say, "Why isn't the STEM school STEAM?" And what they're lacking in understanding is that it really is, because we are a school that integrates the arts into so many things that we do. All of the problem-based learning units have an arts component of some kind. As they design, that's art, as they are in engineering, they were trained in art first, right? So that component was all the way through the grant, as I wrote about the school and how we integrate the arts into our STEM curriculum. It's a natural fit, and they seem to be pleased with what we said. So they gave us the money, and I bought a set of 24 iPads cases, lighting equipment, a green screen, some sound equipment, a couple tripods, and some other cameras that the students have their hands on with using that technology to create, not just have the iPad or the computer in front of them, they're creating with this technology. So as we're now into problem-based learning units and research and digital literacy and art, they've got the iPads to create with and to create presentations and to make art with. So basically, that's where it came from.
There were eight schools from across the nation, and Julie, as a result of her work, was one of the eight schools. They went to Washington DC, and Grace, tell us the highlight of your trip there. First, how did you get selected to go?
I don't know. It was really... I took, yeah, Coach Morgan helped me. I took 15 students, 10 to 15 students that have their hands on in the art room a lot and are really good at the technology and the help and the work in the building with a lot of this technology. And Coach Morgan just drew their names out of a hat, and then we just started going down the West Wing. Grace was the first one to be drawn, and she's like, "Oh." We called dad, and they were on the plane right away.
So what was the highlight of your trip?
Well, besides seeing all the monuments and all the fun things at Washington DC, it was really fun to hear from all of the other schools about really cool art things that they did to combine STEM with the arts and getting ideas for what we could do for our school and what we could use to improve the arts.
And did you get to make a special trip anywhere, see anything?
Well, we went to a lot of the Smithsonian museums and the art museum and around, see all the museums.
There's one more place that you went.
Did she not go to the White House? We were in the West Wing. It was our time in the West Wing. So it was really cool, beautiful building, the West Wing was.
Well, awesome, congratulations.
Special leader Warren coming up for a photograph, and maybe Mr. Williamson can snap it. I think he just stepped out.
There's a great video online you can catch to show all the schools highlighted. Just type in Julie Hogarth, and it's on our website, thanks to Martha Williamson. All right, thank you.
And as they are sitting down, part of the NAPSC conference dealt with STEAM as well, having engineering, technology, math, and emphasizing the arts. So that was part of the conference, one of the workshops as well, with NAPSC.
And Madam President, under the last recognition item, I think three weeks ago, I attended a recognition ceremony at Kent State University where our own Carla Sibley, Yvonne Culver, and Katrina Halasa were recognized with a community, along with Akron Public Schools, with the Community Impact Award from the Diversity and Social Responsibility Award Celebration, where the Community Impact Award recognizes those three individuals in our organization who've developed programs and activities that focus on the positive development of underrepresented and underserved populations. So here's a copy of the awards, Akron Public Schools, along with Yvonne Culver, Dr. Katrina Halasa, and Carla Sibley.
Lots of deserving folks tonight, and lots of good reasons and lots of good things going on. So thank you very much for bringing them, guys. It cheers a very cool night. The next order of business would be the approval of our meeting minutes from November 12th, 2015.
So moved, second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any question or concerns about those minutes? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
I'm staying.
And Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendations.
Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 14 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved, second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about personnel? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes, abstaining from item 34 and 39.
Reverend Walker?
Yes, and standing from the last two items, which is probably...
Forty and...
Forty and thirty-five. Any that have my name on it.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from items 32 and 36.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, with no exceptions.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes, abstaining from item 37.
Yes, abstaining from 33 and 38.
Next, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and six resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved, second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about consent? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
And finally, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 10 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved, second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about business affairs?
Just have a question on item number eight about the online learning. Was curious about some additional information regarding that.
Item eight is requesting your authorization to purchase up to 50 units of Little Lincoln for our K-5 elementary kids. And we pay them per student that we enroll, $250 for the, $2,500 for the curriculum and $1,000 for the equipment that we rent. And in turn, they become our full-time student, and there's a net cash flow back to us of approximately $2,500 after expenses per student. Right now, we have 17 students that are involved in the K-5 online school. Interestingly enough, over the past, what, this is almost a semester now, we're about halfway into the second marking period, we've actually had three of the 20 overall actually re-enroll and speak full-time.
Thanks, Alan.
Any questions about business affairs? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
And for my report, Madam President, there's one item I'd like to bring up regarding technology, is that we are going to be transitioning away from our current email system to the Google Apps for Education, Gmail, and the Google suite. We'll be rolling that out, I think, over the next several weeks. We'll talk to you all about how we'll transition the board, but we'll first start with staff, and Howard Lawson can answer any questions about that, but just so you're aware. And then, as you recall, at the last board meeting, I did give a presentation on the status of our facilities program. We're still studying some of the options that we'll have available, and I'll have some concrete, I think, plans at our next board meeting. But the one thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, in your board packet, there was a summary of elementary school class sizes, grades, kindergarten through six. And on page five of that, I just want to note that we have each of our elementary schools and their subsequent enrollments. So my report at the next board meeting will most likely focus at the elementary level in terms of whether or not any buildings can be consolidated. I do have some concerns. As we pointed out in the five-year forecast, the amount of square footage we have, particularly at elementary school, is in excess of the available students that we have currently. So my focus, I think initially, will be at the elementary level in terms of our facility plan, and then, of course, working with the city to develop the options at our secondary level as well. So at the next board meeting, you can look for a full report regarding some options that we might have for some consolidation.
As far as the president's report tonight, I would just remind the board that we are approaching the end of the year and a time of transition. So it will, it is now time for you to voice your goals, aspirations, best-laid plans for what cluster you'd like to represent next year, what committees you might like, on which you might like to serve, and if you have aspirations to be president or vice president, so you would... so you would want to get in touch with myself and/or Mr. Alexander and let us know those intentions. If you could just copy both of us, that would be great. If you just want to send it to me, that's fine as well. And what we do is try to, just for everyone's edification, you try to pick a cluster. If you have one that you're already comfortable in, or you're in the process of working with some folks there and you want to stay there, just let us know. I know that we have some committee work that's kind of deeply entrenched as well. So, but if you do have some aspirations, if you could just let us know in the coming weeks. It's amazing how quickly the end of the year is going to come here. And that is really all I have to talk about tonight.
No report.
All right. Committee reports this evening. It looks like we have legal on policy. Okay, you're growing, okay. You may go.
Madam President, presenting for third and final lead tonight, three policies. First is, as you had a number, dealing with personal ID badges. Second is policy 8420 revised, emergency situations at schools. And finally, policy 927 revised, equivalent education outside of school, this equivalent situation.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or concerns regarding those policies? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Pardon me.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
All right, let's try to start no later than 20 after, please. Thank you.